Okay, welcome to the 2015-16 budget meeting. Tonight we'll be discussing administration, economic development, GIS, assessor planning, communications, tax collector, elections, and town council. If anybody doesn't have any objections, we'll start with GIS. Any objections? Kyle, you get to take the hot seat first.
All right, that's, there we go.
It's on.
All right, I got the green light. So picking up the previous budget from last year, we had nineteen thousand, three hundred and five dollars was appropriated towards GIS IT. The requested amount this year is one hundred seven thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-two cents, which is a decrease of eleven thousand, six hundred eighty-five, forty-eight, about nine, nine percent decrease. The, just highlighting some of the changes, decrease in wages by five thousand, six hundred and forty-eight, that's due to the change in the employee, new to the role, so the pay scale resets. There's a decrease in insurance by about ten thousand dollars, because it's changing from two dependents and to one dependent on the insurance plan. And then there's an increase in software and licenses by four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and ninety-two cents, for reasons in that topic. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has. Yep.
On the equipment budget, equipment replacement, what, what equipment are we replacing? That just has nothing to do with all this AV stuff that we're talking about replacing, right?
No, the, the AV system, that's separate, and it's not a part of this budget. The equipment one is, I have a breakdown of that on the second spreadsheet. That is split into hardware replacement, which is budgeting for, you have, I have the computers on a four to five-year cycle on leases. We have about sixty-five mission-critical devices, uh, mission-critical computers that we're leasing, so I plan on, you know, replacing about ten, ten to twelve of those each year. That also breaks down to software and licenses, that's in, um, equipment replacement, which I actually, equipment replacement, that was just one lump total last year. So you'll see under, yeah, I broke it in, instead of just calling everything equipment replacement, I'm calling it hardware replacement, so that's for computers, actual physical machines. Then we have software and licenses, which is, you know, software is keeping everything working, and licenses to renew, and then we have contracts and leases. So I did away with just a whole lump of just calling everything equipment replacement, and I broke it into three categories to make it easier to understand. And the only thing going up in that category is the software and licenses.
How many, how many computers do we have, does it down there?
For the town, the, for the full-time staff running computers, we have sixty-five computers.
So we have more computers than we do personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
Some are in cruisers, some are in ambulances, some are at, at public computers at the library. There's, there's more per because of the, the fact that the ambulances have them, the cruisers have them, tho- those are in cars, but then we have computers in the buildings as well.
Right, I, I guess my, my thought process of like working computer, you know, I didn't, I never thought about the cruisers in the library and stuff like that.
Yep, it adds up.
It makes sense to me, I mean, I have four people working for my company, and I have seven here, you know, so. But I, I could have a question on your budget.
Wait, wait a minute, can I, oh, you counsel, like, you don't have your light on. The public cannot hear on the TV unless your lights are on, just as an notation.
I just had one question on your budget, Carl. The internet cost, we budgeted sixty-two hundred for the proposed budget for this year. Has something changed there? Because I, when I look at a budget, I try to go back for the previous three years and what we actually spend on a budget, on a line item, and that's not really in line with everything that we spend, because the average medium that we spend on that is eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. So is this internet cost for the entire, um, town, and then it's bailed out or in different lines, in different budgets, or?
The only internet cost in this, in this budget-
You're on your communications, he's on your IT.
I was gonna say, I was really confused.
Oh, you jumped back up to IT, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, the only, the only internet in this budget is a backup hotspot that I just have prepaid, in case our internet goes down, we have a backup solution. It's not something we pay for every month, but it's on an as-needed basis, because I don't wanna be without internet in crucial times, but it's not something we pay. I allocated three hundred dollars just in case we have to activate it. But that's just set aside, and hopefully we don't have to turn it on, like we did during elections.
Council, I will-
Kyle, couple of observations and a question. The observation is, from what, the parts that I do understand, I respect the analysis you put into the policies reflected in the budget, in terms of backup and in terms of use of time. But I will confess that under the increase in software and licenses section, you know, I've got no history with some of these companies, they're just letters to me in a lot of ways. But you make a case, um, where did it go? In the second full paragraph, initially you talked, okay, we've gone to a free open service, in essence, if I'm reading that right. And then you're talking about a service with all the updating that has to occur with information that's backlogged over several years. And I, and I agree that would not be a good use of paying you to sit at a computer and do that. But is that company, I think you're saying it's the same as something else, and I didn't see the, the connection.
The Main Street map service-
Yep.
So our web mapping that's available to the public-
Yes.
And that, you know, we have available for residents to come in or from home, they can just pull up anything on their computer that's in town. We have the assets, like the parcel lines, all of our new aerial photography has been made to the public. That's the web GIS, that's the mapping service that we offer. It's the same company that we can go to a different package, and they have the ability for us to outsource the updates to our parcel lines, which are done just by pulling deeds and plotting out the deeds and then correcting, it's a very time-consuming process.
Yeah, but this, but my question is, the web mapping service, that's free, is that the same company that we're gonna pay thirty-six hundred to, to do that updating?
Yes.
I'm just confused about-
It's the same, it's the same company, and it's not, it's not free currently. Currently it's-
You've touched on Quantum.
Oh, Quantum GIS, so the para- the paragraph before-
Right.
Yeah, the GIS software is what we use in-house, so paragraph one under software and licenses. The Quantum GIS is open source, so I'm moving away from a previous software that my predecessor used called Map Info, that was seventeen hundred dollars a year for three licenses. None of us here use it, I'm more comfortable using an open-source software, I can accomplish the same tasks with it. Maybe down the road I'd need something else, but I don't right now, so I was able to save seventeen hundred a year by switching to an open source for just the use in-house.
Thank you, I think part of my confession is missing the difference between GIS and mapping.
It's very close.
Any other questions for Kyle? Okay, thank you very much, Kyle.
All right, you're welcome.
So, if anybody doesn't have any objections, the next one we'll move to is assessor slash planning. Any objections?
Question here.
Dean Bennett?
Well, Dean is-
Excuse me, Dean is economic development, as the, as a budget per se. The assessing, the assessor budget, it said assessor planning, there's not, there's funds in there for the administrative support for the department, which are in that, and, and our assessor is unable to be here this afternoon, I will be, evening I will be talking about that. Dean will be talking about economic development, which is-
Okay, I guess I was getting ahead of myself and had him in charge of all of it already. Dean, economic development, I'm pleased. Thank you. Good evening. Really quite a simple budget, there's six line items. Starts with a salary, that, there's travel and training that allows me to get where I need to be on behalf of the community. Dues to professional organizations, such as the Economic Development Council of Maine, to which I'm a member and have been certified under. Advertising, for those ads that we would do in support of, say, the Bangor Chamber or Discover Maine, I've used this past year. Those are ads which really depict the Hamden seal, that says a presence in these documents, these publications. And then the marketing line item, which is, let's see, I've used that in a number of different ways. It's an effort to brand the community, probably example, if you've seen in my office, the testimonies from the business owners that we have, those colored eight-by-tens that I have, those are actual ads that appeared in Main Biz Magazine, that I put under the marketing budget, which in essence we do a favor. We, we highlight one of our businesses in our community at no cost to them, and use their testimony about what it's like to do business with us, and get as much distance as we can. And advertising in Main Biz, which is the leading publication of all business owners and decision-makers in the state. And that really is it of my budget.
I don't really have a question for Dean in this department, but it's a note I made going through this, that I'm still waiting for us collectively, especially with the current town manager, to talk about benefits, health insurance, and-
The next finance committee meeting will include a presentation from a gentleman about the program that I want to bring to Hamden that will result in lower costs in the health insurance line item that are presented here, still provide excellent claims payment for the employees, but overall will see a dramatic reduction in the, the amount of health premium dollars that the town has to pay to an insurance company upfront. It's, I, I think you will find it fascinating, but at the very least, it will, it will help you to understand better where I'm hoping the council will agree to go in looking at healthcare coverage a bit differently than the town has looked at it in the past.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Dean? Hey Dean, lovely evening. Well, thank you, too. Elections, Denise, she's right here, she's, she's here for the duration. All right, then we'll go back, start at the beginning. Administration.
Well, someplace I have my own budget. No, I've got, there, no? It's pretty bad when you didn't bring your own. Oh, no, the breakdown is what I'm looking for. Thank you, Denise. The administration budget covers the front office operations plus the total cost for property and casualty insurance for the entire town, all of our auto, auto and property liability coverages, that's included under group insurance, estimated at forty-nine thousand dollars, which is, is what it's been pretty much since eleven-twelve. We are out to bid for that again. I, I'm pretty sure that we'll come in at or under that level, not a lot, but that, that's a, a safe number for the estimate. The other cost that's here for the town is the cost of the town's audit is entirely used, is entirely budgeted in the administrative line item. That, that cost has been pretty much the same for a number of years, which at ninety-five hundred dollars, once upon a time, that used to be a much bigger number, but we've done a good job at setting up protocols that make the audit, for the auditor's purposes, an easier go of it. We have a legal budget of what I'm estimating at twelve thousand dollars for next year, but today I received a letter from the town attorney that he's retiring in July of this year, and the town attorney, who's been the town attorney since nineteen eighty-nine, or the late eighties, will no longer be with us after he's agreed to transition, after, he's going part-time after July, but he will not be, he will transition while the town moves to a new attorney. That's gonna be a huge institutional memory loss for the town, because he's literally done all of the town's legal work, other than general questions of law, which we get through the main municipal association as part of our dues cost. So that's, the, the cost under administration for legal primarily is the cost of, we have had a town attorney at our council meetings at a very reduced rate over time, and then any administrative questions that require legal coverage. The software contracts that are listed is the cost of the annual licensing for the Trio computer system that the town uses for automobile registration, budgetary, the clerk functions, literally everything except assessing code enforcement, which is budgeted under the assessing budget. That seventy-nine hundred dollars covers the cost of the annual licensing for all of the, that software that, that we utilize. Postage and shipping, obviously, any and all mailings that are, are going out of this community, the, uh, travel and training is for the costs associated with traveling, uh, the expenses associated for staff who attend training or, or need to be recertified to perform their functions on behalf of the town. Advertising is the cost of placing ads for your public hearings that the town, the council holds for, as part of its business. Depending on the level of activity of the council or, or the town in general, those ad, there's more or less of those than necessary, and there's also the cost of advertising for personnel vacancies, that's part of that. Workers' comp, health, life, dental, those are, are all part of each, each of the budgets. The health insurance, as I said, will be a lower number than that in the, once you see the presentation from the gentleman at the next finance committee meeting, because I just got the numbers from him recently, based on an audit of our actual usage, so it, there will be some additional savings there. The, the salaries budgeted are for existing personnel, and the salary budgeted for the manager is, is the salary that I would have received if I had stayed with the cost of living. That is not the highest number on your salary scale, and it is not that, not because I'm not eligible for that, but because in, for two years, I did not take raises when the remainder of employees did, and that, my salary is lower than, than where you could go on the salary scale for the manager for that thing. Now, whether you want to budget more, to have available for a salary for a new manager, that, that's up to you, that's the, the top step on your range step, scale, takes it to about ninety-seven thousand dollars. And currently, as proposed, if it were me, it would be ninety-one-nine, or, or close to ninety-two thousand, because of that, that gap. Depends on who you hire and what their level of expertise is, I would imagine, but that's, I didn't budget for more than you were currently paying me. You have, as I said, there's a forty thousand dollar lump in the wage and salary reserve that you, if you wanted to take some out to offset, if you needed more, you could, but that's where the, and that's basically your admin costs, the, in some years, you will notice that the legal budget went kind of crazy. It was twenty thousand, and then it was budgeted at thirty-two thousand, and during the time when the town was redoing its comp plan, it ended with, up with a lot of legal fees associated with some of the challenges that the town had at that time, and, but for general operations, when, that it's not necessary to have legal fees of that. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes?
One question I have is, travel and training for the entire administration is forty-five hundred, but for economic development, it's three thousand. Economic development's one person, I don't-
Even forty-five hundred seems a little high.
Well, forty-five hundred for, um, the fact that there's, that covers the manager, the clerk, the tax collector, the finance officer, the, and the other two people in the front office, we're talking for six people, we've got forty-five hundred. I have used less in the past several years while I was on the Board of Environmental Protection, not to be out of the office as much for attending some of these others. The offset to doing some of that was to not be gone as much. Now, the remainder of staff has, in the past, on occasion, attended the, there's generally a two or three-day training for each classification that happens, plus the municipal convention, which again offers more training. We've not been able to send anyone to convention a few years because it coincides with tax due date here, um, in October. However, the, the economic development director's travel and training budget, he has historically attended many Economic Development Council of Maine and, and a number of other outside agencies. Moving forward with some of his new responsibilities, it may be that he's not able, that that will be an offset, that you, that his responsibilities and his focus will, will be more here than at some of these other organizations. And so, I wouldn't recommend cutting that this year, but I certainly would look at how the, you should see a reduction in the expense in those line item, in that line item. And you may see an increase or more usage in the forty-five hundred for this, depending on the nature of what your new manager does for attendance at-
So forty-five hundred on this is, is-
It's very reasonable.
You do anticipate, okay, that's what I was looking for, for an answer.
Yes, and I, I mean, we've, we've continued to budget, but we've also been very trugal with who goes what, when, and where, just because depending on how many people are at our, the office at a time, it makes it more difficult for operations to run smoothly.
Is it, I should've done this while Dean was here, but I wasn't looking at both at the same time.
I forget. I said, I should've done this while Dean was here, but I wasn't looking at both at the same time. Is it possible to get from him the benefits of going to the trainings, what, what we as a town get from that? What he did in the past, well, I think it was prior to this, is he attended trainings to become certified in, in the economic development certification, and some of those were related to those things. The attendance at some of the other meetings, that, that ongoing discussion about, a year ago, we removed BRIDA as a dues-paying organization, because there was not a direct benefit that anybody could point to, that, and that was three thousand dollars that we removed from that, from the dues line item, and that's why it's a smaller amount. The discussion of the value of attendance at some of these outside organizational things would be, I think, a good discussion for a finance committee meeting, or planning and development actually probably would be a really good topic to look at for where the value, because those are totally related to the, the economic development community at large, as opposed to economic development in Hamden, per se.
Council, I will-
Yeah, I think P and D would be a good discussion about that, especially with a new town manager coming on. That'll be something we'll have to all figure out as a team. I, I have a few questions, nothing crazy. One easy one, here's a softball. Why is the phone down so much? Oops, sorry. Counselor McAvoy was gonna do that one, too, we both picked up on it.
When we switched, when we switched systems and started looking at where the phones were and what everything was paying for, some of what was being paid for by administration should've been in assessing, and so we moved it.
Okay, all right. Suggestion, contrary to all of our intentions to cut costs, I think your advertising line, looking at the track record and thinking about what's going on currently should actually be higher than you've got it. Just food for thought, and I'll take your best recommendation when we're done.
Yeah, we had thirty-seven, twenty-six, thirty-three, thirty-one, and, and I budgeted three. Denise?
One reason that the advertising was higher than budgeted this year, remember all those charter changes we did last November?
Tons of them.
Those had to be advertised, the entire amendment had to be advertised, so they were very costly. So if you don't make any more charter changes, you might be okay.
Not to the nature of what we did, which was huge.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of things like, you have a quote, "town attorney retiring." I don't know if that will end up requiring advertising in dollars, it may not. We've got personnel changes, we all know are occurring, that may have consequences and may not. I just think it's an area that we wanna be, just to be able to say, hey, if we don't spend it, terrific, but maybe we wanna set aside a little bit more money. That's, that's the only intention of my comment.
If, after the, you hear the insurance, you may be able to slide some money from the insurance line item down to advertising if you're uncomfortable with that number without changing your bottom, without increasing your bottom line.
And very similarly, and not a lot of money more, but if we are gonna be working with an attorney that doesn't have the multi-decade history that you're talking about, it may naturally incur a few more hours of work than the one you have had, whether it's to get up to speed on something, or looking for citations that the previous attorney may just have known. Don't know. Just a reminder.
I'm sure you'll have a discussion at some point about moving- I'm sure you'll have a discussion at some point about moving forward, how you want to use your attorney, whether it's at every meeting, at, in review of things. We had a discussion of this a year or so ago. There were different thoughts on what the best way to do that was. It ended up that we retained having the attorney at every meeting, but the town gets a very advantageous capped rate on, on the rate and the hours for that. So it, it has been less expensive than trying to have him watch a DVD to get up to speed on what we did when he was gone. So that, that will have to occur, but I got the letter today about the lawyer, so.
Right. Surprised.
Getting back to the telephone, can you quantify the difference between what we're paying for and then since we switched over to OTT or whatever they are?
The, the costs are not dramatically different. What happens is it, it is a more, a more, we're not limited. Before, we couldn't add another line because there was no, there was no more room in the system without changing, and all of our phones were obsolete. They couldn't do conference calls, we couldn't do very much. The newer one, which is the voice-over internet protocol, is, is, the cost of the phone is not, the cost of our changed internet, you know, what one went down, the other went up to compensate for. But the changed internet also allows us more than just the phone in terms of, of ability to process data and do those kind of things. But it was, it was not a huge cost saver. It was, it was more cost neutral than it was anything else. Oh, there's a lot more services provided through this phone system and through the increased internet capacity than there was before, but the dollars and cents didn't change.
I just have, I have some concerns over the wages. Not proposing to make changes now, of course, because we don't wanna cut people's wages. But, I mean, I went through and figured out how many days a year our office workers work. Granted, they work ten-hour days, but they work one-hundred-and-eighty-two hours, one-hundred-and-eighty-two days a year. And our wages, a lot of them make more than our police officers make.
Actually, they don't. Our base rate for our police officers is for X amount that police officers have the ability to work overtime and earn whatever, and they do. The, the employees work forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year, or how, including the holiday provision. But because they do that in four days, doesn't make it less hours than if they did it in five days. They're, they're still. The other thing, which, whether you look at it positively and negatively, many of our office employees are long-term. They're at the top of their wage scale and they've been here long enough. And the town has been progressive enough to move its wage scale by cost of living on an annual basis so that. But when we've, when we've hired to replace, it's been at lower than what we, what we were doing earlier because you get somebody who's coming on who's, doesn't have fifteen years or thirty years or whatever amount of time that, that the employees have had in it. And the, the other thing is that the slashes are, when you're looking at the, what people do, there's a lot of cross-straining available in terms of, to make the place still run if it, if somebody's not sitting in their chair. So that's kind of how they got to where they were. But as people have been replaced, it's at lower wages than what was before. When Kathy left after, you know, the, the rate for her, for that went down, that was two years ago dramatically. Most, any new hire is not gonna come in at the same, you know, there will be some, I, I would be very surprised if you hired a manager for the same or less than you are paying me. But that, that's the nature of that position.
Yeah, your wage wasn't one of my concerns. And I did, I was actually looking at hourly, I wasn't looking at daily, because I do understand that they work ten hours a day and including benefits and everything. And like I said, I'm not proposing cutting people's pay, but looking at the, what the same, a person who did the same job in the private sector, I'd like to see us in the future look more at trying to be in line for the same. I don't, I don't, I don't want, it's hard to explain. I want people to work here because they like the job, because I don't just want people to come to work for the town because they think they can make more money than working in the private sector, if that makes sense.
I would tell you that there's nobody working here that, that, or that I'm aware of that thinks they're making more than they would in the private sector. From being the CEO of a fourteen or fifteen million dollar company, which wouldn't be compensating you at ninety thousand dollars a year, to, our, our clerk is a paralegal on top of her other talents, which is what makes her an exceptional clerk. The, the requirements, certifications, et cetera, for the positions that are compensated are not, could be equaled in the private sector, but they wouldn't be equal to, to an administrative assistant or say, there, there, there's not an equation that says somebody in Denise's position would be, could be replaced on the same salary level by somebody who was a secretary. That, the skill sets are not the same in terms of that. And, and I think maybe as we move forward or as the town moves forward, that the new manager, since I haven't, needs to do a better job of articulating exactly what the criteria, credentials and, and requirements are of some of these positions that, that the town has. And in looking at other communities in comparable size, how many staff people? The town of Hamden has the same number of people working in the front office that it had in nineteen ninety. One was part-time at that time, but that, that, from that time forward is the same. We did an analysis a few years ago of the town's staffing patterns. And with the exception of public safety, which used to have a full-time dispatch, and you counted those people in the public safety, those people are not there, but they're present in more police officers and fire, fire paramedics than we used to have. The office staff is, the manager in Hamden used to have a secretary. That hasn't been true for fifteen years, you know, we, that, the, the staffing patterns have, we've stayed the same. Certainly, technology's helped to do that in some ways, but the town's population has grown from fifty-five hundred to seventy-three hundred. And the, the staffing to do the taxes and do all that stuff has not increased. So when I say I haven't done a good job of sort of, things run along and people think, you know, that's how it works. But the, what we have for staffing and what we've had traditionally, over many years, would surprise you that, you know, that this, this staffing pattern is not, we haven't added people, certainly in the, since the, we went back to nineteen ninety and, and pulled it forward in order to look at it. But as I said, the, in order to make it an apples-to-apples comparison, it needs to be apples-to-apples to someone doing a similar kind of job with similar certification and, and those kind of requirements. And, you know, what it takes to run an election in the state of Maine, which is Denise's responsibility, on top of vital records and licensing and all those things are, are. You're going to have to look up the food chain of good ways to find someone that would have that level of responsibility in the private sector. I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to explain sort of where we, where we are and how we got there. And the councils, you know, I would just ask that when you look at it, that it, it be at a more complex level than simply on a, by day, you know, it's gotta have something to do with what their responsibilities are and what their level of expertise is and, and how many people you'd have to hire to replace them, which is, you know, another.
Right.
Question.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not doubting that anybody works really hard. I'm just, I, I would assume just when you rehire, when you hire a new person, you have to look at what their expertise is. I mean, our highest, our last hired person in the town, which was hired a year and a half ago. See, it's hard because I, I don't wanna give names, but I also, I don't want to, I guess we'd have to go through and, 'cause it depends on exactly what they do. But it's just the, the, not all. I'm not saying all of the wages are out there, but some of them are. And like I said, yours isn't one I was concerned about, Denise's not one I was concerned about, because I know how hard you guys work. And I'm not saying that anybody doesn't work hard. I'm just saying that I think that our wages for some of our staff are, are a little high. And I'd like to see when we do rehire people that, I mean, I, I would assume that I won't even be on the council at the time that some people leave and are rehired, but I would like to see us try to get a reduction in our pay compared to, even compared to what the same people do at different towns, I don't know. I know it's hard for the private sector because the private sector doesn't do what you do in a town. But there are people that probably, even though they don't have the same jobs, work as hard. So, I mean, I'd like, that's all.
That would be the council's decision on what kind of wage scale it wants to maintain. And, and the last time the council looked at, which was a number of years ago, it made adjustments because the town was so, the wage scale was so depressed that in two thousand, in nineteen ninety-nine, they had a hard time attracting candidates for the manager's position because they didn't have enough money. And the salary structure was such that they couldn't, they, the department heads, under them, who had multi-million dollar budgets of their own, were also extremely depressed. I don't mean they were depressed, I mean the salary was depressed. And that made us into the community who was training police officers for other communities and firefighters for other communities, and, and you ended up with a, a very little institutional knowledge and a lot of. But the council went through a, a wage study at that time and, in comparison to communities of similar size and function and economic status, shall we say. The, Hamden's apples-to-apples comparison needs to be to communities that have six-hundred-plus million-dollar valuations and seven-thousand-odd, some odd people and, and those kind of things. That's apples-to-apples when you start to look at, and the council did, and that's when it changed the, this is where it is. But if the council wants to make that different, you look at it again and say, do we still wanna be competitive for people when we lose them? You know, in terms of who are you gonna get to apply for your jobs? But that's, you know, the council can do that at any time that they want to, is look at your salary structure and decide if you are happy with it or you're not.
Well, one thing is, is I have, this all includes benefits, too, which if the health insurance changes, that will change that a little bit. It may change it a lot, I don't, I don't know. But this includes salaries and benefits for each individual. And this list is from, I don't know when this is from, I think this is from the end of two thousand fourteen, which is probably.
Was that the one that you would ask me for, the breakdown of the wages and the benefits? Yes, I think that was two thousand fourteen.
So, that's all I have, I guess.
Any more questions? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move along to assessor planning.
Assessing and planning this year under wages includes the assessor and the administrative assistant that will be working in the planning and development department. The wages that are listed, there's those two salaries, and then there's wages listed, that's three thousand dollars. And that's the person who's doing the digitizing of our records, the scanning in and digitizing so that we don't have to hold all of this paper and build more rooms for, for putting paper and that we're, we're digitizing that. Vehicle expense line item is the mileage that the assessor gets for using her own vehicle to go out and do inspections. I mean, it also is if she attends meetings, but it's for inspections and related mileage, mileage costs for that. The, the FICA Medicare Retirement, Workers' Comp, Health and Life Insurance, the benefit structure ones are consistent with other departments based on the classification of use that they each have. The office supplies, posted shipping, the, the tree planting here, there's seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars in that. That goes towards, the town's a tree city, USA, we're required to have a certain amount in the budget that says you'll replace trees or care for the public trees. And that seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars can be used to offset some of the cost of fixing the trees at the pool if we have to do that. The software contracts here, that, there's an increase proposed for that. And the, a copy of the quote, which was to include the sketching program on Trio so that ultimately, when people are viewing property cards and those kind of, they can also see the property sketches on the card as well. And right now, we don't have that function. And the, the initial price for the license is a thousand, and then there's a three-hundred-dollar component for training. The annual maintenance cost beyond that would not be thirteen hundred dollars a year, it would be three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a year after the initial installation. The, we don't have external printing anymore, we used to, we, we do as much of that in-house as we can. as we can. Zoning is, is the cost for the notices and the public notices and plans review and those kind of things of items that go before the planning board. And that's an estimate, we can't know at the beginning of any year exactly how many projects are going to come in. That's the estimate. And then legal fees are the cost that the town pays the town attorney to review deeds, subdivisions that are going to turn over roads or sewer or those kind of things, the review of those. Some of the monies that, that, and it's left at $6,000 because some of the expenses are then recouped from developers who have made these applications. They pay some of the costs of plans and legal review. So, leaving that at $6,000 is legitimate. The, we had talked at, a year ago about looking at shared assessing services, there's, that certainly may be in the future for the town. Herman was where we had looked initially, they are under contract with a person who was Bangor's assessor for many years, and the county is still not moving forward with any more regionalized approach. So, the, and there's not money in here for planning. I explained that to you before, that, that money outside of here should you require it. In speaking with the planner, our planner who's leaving on Thursday, a recommendation was made that we have, our engineering company, Woodard and Curran does a peer review of the engineering components of any major subdivision or those kind of zoning application. And that if the town wanted to, that that company could also do an assessment of whether that application met the town's zoning or subdivision standards. And that considering that we have five or six of those a year, that that could be done very cost-effectively by having the company do it and send the results back to what would be Dean, the head of that department, for presentation to the planning board as opposed to having a staff person do all that processing. Because it's a matter of assessing whether the application meets all the criteria of zoning. And considering that we're not doing 15 of those a week in terms of these major projects, that, it was Bob's suggestion, that would be more cost-effective to utilize our engineering view to do that, which is something perhaps planning and development will, will talk about. Given the current workload and structure, that, that's the way that this is proposed. As I said, there's the $40,000 set aside which you can use for whatever you want to or for nothing if you find that this isn't working. Some of the additional savings from the, what's going to change in health insurance could be used as an offset. But I think that, given your options or some of the additional options that appear, that you, you should be between this and the reserve, your economic development director's time and salary that you would have sufficient to meet this need. There, I recognize that that's, that you don't all agree with me, and that's fine. I'm presenting what I think is, for right now, some options that can get you cost-effectively and credentially kind of what you need. These larger applications that an engineering company could work through and give us an answer for in a fairly short order are much more time-consuming to be reviewed in-house. And if you can do that for $1,000 or $1,500 when an application comes in, as opposed to maintaining that all the time, then you may find that that's an option that could serve you well and would be extremely defensible because they, they have the credentialing that would be required to do that.
Counsel, Michael.
Well, I'm just wondering if any of this is in the proposed budget somewhere? I have a habit of nodding my head and agreeing with things sometimes, and a week later being asked, well, where was that exactly? And not remembering.
Well, the, the town requires in these big projects that, that the developer put X amount of down, money down to, to cover the cost of processing the application. And what we don't spend, we give back. That's how that works. If you incurred an additional $1,000 cost out of the money they've already given you, but the offset was time or, you know, the turnaround thing was, was faster, I think that with these more major projects, that isn't the, the concern isn't, am I going to get that extra $1,000 back? The concern is how fast am I going to get what I want? Or some version of what I want. But the cost of some of that could be, would be assumed by developers. Out of funds that they already give us to process their application, but, which we end up giving back because we don't charge our planners' time against the cost of those. You know, we, that's something that we were paying for, but we weren't getting any, any money back from developer for that plans review. But that was Bob's suggestion, which I thought was a very, a very thoughtful suggestion for how to deal with some of these things going forward.
Counsel, Shakespeare.
Well, time will tell on the planning. What do you mean, Sue, by this $40,000 set aside?
There's a reserve account, you haven't looked at reserves yet. Reserves has $40,000 in a wage and study reserve that the town has, that it used to make changes to its personnel plan years ago, in which the council used some of to offset a cost of living increase for the staff two years ago, to debt, to where there was no money left in that reserve. I put, I put, the budget has in it, in that reserve account, $40,000 budgeted for those, for the council to have some flexibility with, with staffing issues, salaries, those kind of things. That's wherever you put it, whether it's in planning or economic development or the manager, whatever, or nowhere. But that's, was the accommodation, was that that money wasn't plugged into a category. It was left to the council to decide what category or, based on, based on, to be honest, what you see happening in terms of your staffing, what, what you, I am confident that as Dean manages this department, that he will give you feedback on how well or poorly this works. And that, I talked to him today about the idea of, of using professional review of these bigger, mentioning that Bob, and he had a high degree of comfort with that in terms of its ability to meet the town's needs without paying on an ongoing basis for something that you might not be using as much of.
Like I said, time will tell, so
Absolutely.
Hopefully, you know. Excuse me.
No, go ahead.
On tree planting, $750, we didn't use any of that. Now, that's rolled over into?
Fund balance. It, go, everything at the end of the year that doesn't get spent washes back into fund balance to be, it's, it's part of what
You mean general fund?
General fund, yes. We, we reduced from 400,000 to 200,000 the amount we were going to take out of general fund because fund balance this year to offset this budget because our fund balance has shrunk because we've used so much of it and not replenished it. So, at the end of the year, if there's whatever's left in any of these budgets that's not carried forward for a specific purpose, we have, we've carried forward salt money before. If we didn't, if we had some ridiculous winter and it was, we had not spent very much of it, we've carried that money forward rather than reappropriate it all. It just starts off as a plus in the column, but, but 99% of what happens at the end of the year is whatever's left washes back into the general fund, fund balance, and then we take out some the next year to offset taxes, which is what this year's proposal does with 200,000 dollars.
Thank you.
Counsel, McAvoy.
Yeah, this is the, the wages that you're paying for this person doing the digitizing, is that actually resulting in you removing some hard coffee stuff and getting rid of it?
It's going, what happens is, we need it accessible, but we, it doesn't have to be, it now is accessible via computer as opposed to, we still have the originals, but they're in, they're not resident in this building storage, they're stored offsite. And, I mean, we own the property, but they don't, they don't have to be in here so somebody can physically thumb through them and find something anymore. It's, what it's doing is, is creating space that was formerly taken out by file cabinets to allow for people to have workspace that isn't, the, the plans and permitting stuff, which has been kind of the first round, has resulted in two full three drawer lateral files, three things high, being gone out of one office and two more out of another one. I mean, that's, you know, that, all of that scanned and now accessible to be searched by all sorts of things. But yeah, the point is to get the paper out of the, but people, for people to still have access to the information that was there. And in some cases, we have to keep the originals.
Right, that was going to be my next question.
We do. But, but they don't have to be sitting where you can touch them, they just have to be accessible so that you can see the information.
Counsel, Dupree, you had a question?
Oh, I just wanted to comment, I think that, not last year, but the year before, we used part of that wage study money to give a cost of living increase
That's correct.
To the town. So, I would like to see that money left there if we possibly could, just in case we need it for something like that, that we have it to fall back on.
That will be, that, that will be a count, reserves require council authority to spend them, which is why it's there. That money isn't put into a specific budget because those budgets are under the authority of, of the manager to manage anything that's less than 2,000, $10,000. If it's in a reserve account, the council has to make the decision on where that money, how, if that money gets spent for that purpose. So, that's why it's there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, and we'll move on to communications.
I'm sure everyone's tired of hearing me talk, but these are all budgets that are part of it. The communications budget is funded from monies that we receive from Time Warner Cable in franchise fees.
Should you notice my head turn?
Yes, that's the source of the, the funding. The, the breakdown shows under cable TV wages, what's budgeted for the number of meetings that we air and for the cost of paying somebody else to film and video the school board meetings, that's included there. The cost for supplies, FICA Med obviously goes with the wages. There's a $500 special events once upon a time, and the, the town had a Hamden Day or Hamden Highlight Day and got together its nonprofit service organizations to provide a, a one-stop shopping for people looking for volunteer opportunities in, in Hamden. That, or if the, the town decided to, it, it would, could use some of that, those funds to offset the cost of the barbecue for the volunteers that we had for the stream cleanup. It's something that is a promotion of the town that, that monies are used for. The, I didn't put any money under computer equipment because again, that, that amount would be the PEG grant, that $50,000, which would come separately to the council. Printing and publications, I, I reduced that by half to cover the cost of two editions of the newsletter as opposed to four, which is what I think services had put forward before and had been approved. The newsletter layout at $250 a quarter is Val Williams, who is at the University of Maine in their media department. When she does the layout of the newsletter, that's what their, that cost is, and there's two, that if you continue in the, with a newsletter in its current format, there's been suggestions to just print it like the school does there, not their, their bigger thing, but their adult ed and that kind of thing, a stapled together kind of thing would be a cheaper way to do that. That, that isn't how this is presented in the budget. This, this two editions is two editions of the current kind of newsletter. If you didn't want it to be as, it's not shiny because it's not shiny paper, but as, as much a program as it is, it, you know, some of that cost could be less. The, the internet costs or the annual gov office fee for the website, and then Time Warner's internet costs for this. So, those are the expenses related to communication, as I said. The, the costs are absorbed by fees received from Time Warner for franchise fees, which the town of Hamden receives 3% of the franchise fees charged on everyone's cable bill for cable services only. Franchise fees are not charged on the internet portion of a cable bill. The town would be eligible to up to 5%, but has chosen 3% because that is more than sufficient to cover the costs of programming related to the cable TV. And in consideration of the fact that people outside the cable area can't generally, I mean, they couldn't prior to us doing video streaming, get access to what you see on that. You can now, but, and that's absorbed as part of this as well.
Questions, Counsel McAvoy?
If this franchise fee is basically a pass-through fee, I mean, why would it be any concern at all to Time Warner how we spend that money?
The fran, the franchise fee is a pass-through based on the total amount of, the total amount that people in Hamden spend on cable TV services. That's a legal requirement. That isn't what they're talking, that isn't what they asked for. They asked for specifications on the pay, it's called a PEG grant. And that PEG grant is a contractual thing that they built into the first round that And that PEG grant is a contractual thing that they built into the first round that is supposed to be somehow tied, but not every community has done that. Some communities have used it for things that had nothing to do with providing their residents the ability to access via cable, or via meetings, or those kind of things. They've used it for other stuff. They've used it to set up internal email systems and things that... And as the person on the end of the end of the contract, while I'm not sure they can, they're looking to see in terms of contractually, how many people are actually doing what these grants were in these contracts designed to do. That's why they want to know. And I was happy that we could at least show them that Hamden the first time did and would be doing it the second time, same way.
Sue, I had a question on the internet charges. I noticed that they're spiking as of last year. We started spending quite a bit more. Is that with Time Warner also?
That's associated with the phone change. We had to change our internet capability here in order to be able to do voiceover and run the rest of the data.
Okay, so it's the voice override integration program and voice phone that did that?
Yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move to tax collector.
This is the cost of sending out tax bills and putting on tax liens. And it's some, it's been $6,000 for just about ever. And depending on where things fall between those two accounts, the $6,000 is sufficient to offset the cost there. Yeah, the annual software cost is 300 for the program for the billing. Tax billing itself is 1,000. Postage for your tax bills, and then postage for foreclosure notices come under computer services. And then the liens and transfers are the cost of recording and discharging tax liens. There is income on the revenue side because the property owner pays the cost of placing and discharging the lien through fees, and the fees in the revenue side of the budget offset the cost of placing and receiving them. But we have to have a budget to take it out of when we spend it. And we have to spend it before we get the money back.
Counsel Marvel.
Just a process organizational question. It just struck me that this looks like a specific service the town provides within an overall Department of Finance Administration. So, I was just wondering, why isn't it just a line in another budget? Do you know what I mean?
I do, absolutely. And I will totally tell you that this is an inherited structure. The only thing that's changed in the departmental structure of the town in the last 15 years is that we now have a separate ITGIS budget, as opposed to having that all lumped in. We pulled, back in Council, former Council Brans time, all of the non-department, streetlights, fire hydrant, those kind of expenses, and put those, all those bigger utility costs into one budget because they formerly lived in police and fire, and just inflated the heck out of things that were not really public. They were utilities more than they were anything else. And we changed that. We added communications. We added... But the tax collector's always been there, and it may be because once upon a time, that was completely different. But it's just always been a budget. I didn't, I don't have a better explanation than that.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the last one, would be elections.
Town council.
The town council, sorry, we just couldn't...
Elections is you.
Good elections.
Right.
My budget is up a little bit this year. Most of the line items remained the same except for the general expense line item. And that has to do with leasing our voting machines. The Secretary of State leases two voting machines for us at no cost to the town. At the time of the original lease in 2013, the town agreed to lease one additional machine at the Secretary of State's cost of $589 for the year. And we use that machine, and it's designated for processing absentee ballots during an election. That way, we're not tying up the machines that the public is using as they're coming into the polls. Following the election in 2013, it became evident to me that we would definitely need additional machines. These newer machines are so much slower than the old ones. And we all know what happened in 2014, even after I had the two additional machines. In order to lease the two additional machines, we were not able to get the rate of $589 a year, but we were able to get them for $749. So, for the two machines at $749, I had to increase that line item by $1,490. So, that's the increase in my budget.
Counsel Marvel?
I just can't help it. $749 for like 48 hours or whatever. I mean, it's not an annual control piece, right?
Well, we have usually two elections per year. And if I purchased those machines, they'd be $20,000 apiece. Pretty good deal, I think.
Counsel Shakespeare.
So, you, we're going to step back to elections here. And the debacle we went through this last election with new machines, more expense, are we going to go through that again?
Are we going to go through what?
The tie-up, you know, the...
Not if you don't have two ballots that are two-sided with 100...
Charter changes.
Charter changes. That was the backlog. That was the reason for it. There was so much for the voters to read. That was the reason.
But if we have something similar again, then...
If we do, then I don't know how else you would control that.
And I, I mean, this is a policy thing rather than your budget, but... So, you don't think it was the fact that we had it all in one place?
No, I do not.
It was just the...
And I think I was pretty clear when I explained that. That was not the issue.
Because years ago, we used to have it.
We did, and that caused more headaches than when we consolidated.
I don't want to cause you a headache, especially just coming back...
I appreciate that, thank you.
Coming back from vacation. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel McAvoy?
If we ended up with a ballot or ballot arrangement similar to what we had last year, how much of an advance notice or is it possible to get another machine within X amount of time, or is this something you have to do months and months ahead, or is that...
I'd have to look into that because I'm not really sure. We may be able to, but it would probably cost us a lot more than... I know the Secretary of State has told us, when I leased these last two machines, they were very direct in saying, "This is your last opportunity to lease them. Speak now or forever hold your peace." So, I'm not sure if we would be able to. I think what I would do, my suggestion was, if we do run into that situation where we have two double-sided ballots again with a lot of, I would promote the heck out of absentee balloting. I think that would be the answer to that.
My way of thinking, I mean, if even if all of these machines cost, say, $1,000, well, I would rather the town spend the $1,000 and have it sitting up there than...
I 100% agree with you. I mean, one of the things this year is absentees were down. I was totally surprised by that. And so, the number of people at the polls was higher than I would have anticipated. However, it was not our highest turnout. We had three or four years that we had higher turnout, and we never had lines. So, it's about, the material that was included in the ballots, and these machines are slower. I mean, they're not astronomically slower, so they wouldn't have caused the backlog that we had, had it not been for the ballots, so...
Unlike the United States government, our citizens tend to read what they vote on before they vote.
I think that's a wonderful thing. I'm very happy with that.
Well, I was just kind of curious, because something you have to do months and months ahead.
Yeah, I would have to...
If you have a pretty good idea, what if you months before...
We should, we should know by August, by the time you really need to have all your public hearings and everything for a charter change by August so that, because I have to order ballots in September, so...
I'm not anticipating a charter change.
Oh, please. Can we take a year off?
Any other questions?
It also coincided with a large election year. I'm sorry. We had the governor and stuff on the ballot, so that was... Sorry. I'll be quiet now.
Okay. Moving right along. You can speak now on town council, please.
Thank you, Mayor Rider. The budget for the council remains the same as last year, which is a estimated a certain number of regular meetings, committee meetings, and outsider special meetings per counselor, the FICA Medicare, Workers Comp that accommodates that. General expense, which is funds for council attendance at outside meetings, travel reimbursement, and group funding requests that meet the council's funding request policy, which is that, no more than $200, and it has to be associated with a group that's associated with RSU 22. And then the dues under this are to the main municipal association, which is what allows us to participate in the property and casualties that we have through them, health insurance, and training and legal services for general questions of law that we use when it's not site-specific, when we want a legal opinion that's on the law rather than something specific to Hamden. And the dues for that are $6,000. And then the local share of BACS, Bangor Area Comprehensive Transit System is DOT, the way DOT funnels money for Hamden's road projects is through BACS, and we have to pay a dues system to that, and our dues for that are $1,718. And that's the total that's under the council. Those two things are under the council, as well as your wages, and then your meeting attendance monies. And the limited amount of requests you get on an annual basis from things like Destination Imagination or some of these other groups that look for $200 apiece. It's the same as it was last year.
Oh, Counsel McAvoy, you had one?
No, I changed my mind.
Okay. No questions, and I have a motion to adjourn. Let's adjourn.
Shall I get?
Thank you very much.